I would like to call to order the City of Cherryville's regular city council meeting of Monday, May the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four at this time. I would like for everyone to stand for our invocation by Pastor Matt Thomas of Second Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come to you tonight with a heart of gratitude. Gratitude for your goodness, your protection this past week through the storms that we experienced. Lord, we lift up those who were affected, the damage that was suffered. Lord, we just pray for those who have much to do. Lord, we thank you for the responders, the linemen, all of those who helped to bring back power. And Lord, we just look forward to a brighter future. Well, we pray for this meeting. We pray for each of these council members, for our mayor, for all those who serve our city so well. We pray that you would give them wisdom in the decisions that must be made. And we pray that all that is done would be pleasing to you. Quarters in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The first item on our agenda tonight is to approve our agenda as presented. What is the council's pleasure on the agenda approval as presented?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same, and there is none. Next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of A, our city council regular meeting of April the eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and B, our city council regular meeting of April the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. What is direction of the council on approval of the minutes?
Make a motion that we approve both sets at the same time. That would be the council regular meeting of April the eighth and the work session and budget session of April the thirtieth.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve the minutes as presented of A, our city council regular meeting April the eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and B, our city council regular meeting of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same, and it is unanimous. Next item is the mayor's comments. Our city has endured its second devastating storm in less than a year without any loss of life. It appears as though Elm Street and Old Post Road received the brunt of the storm with the worst damage. I want to thank all of our city employees for their dedicated and relentless work on restoring our power and getting our city back to as normal as possible. We would also like to thank the city of Forest City and Union, South Carolina, for their untiring help as well. I have found out through these trying times that our city is very resilient and always comes together in times like this. The city's annual Cherry Blossom Festival was a huge success. There was estimates as high as eight thousand that were in attendance for this event. It was certainly one of the biggest and best festivals our city has had in many years. I was honored to present the trophies to the winners at the Truck Museum's annual car show on Saturday of the festival. Over eighty vehicles were registered for this event. Opening day for the city's Little League program was well attended. I was privileged to speak at this event. Over one hundred and sixty of our youth will be participating in this program. Hilda Bates and I awarded each ball player a complimentary hot dog for their attendance at this event. Thanks go out to the Little League Board, all the coaches, umpires, volunteers, and players. City manager Dalton recently met with Jody Warren and his company that comprises several long-range investors. Mr. Warren informed our city manager that his company has purchased the left side of the old Dora Mill on North Mountain Street. That's if you're headed toward Carolina care. This company is preparing to clean this area and plans our repairs to the roof as part of the first steps in rehabbing this area. The engineer's stamped plans for the splash pad has been submitted to the county, and hopes are that there will be a speedy approval by the county so construction can begin on this project. This past Tuesday, the council held its regular work session meeting, followed by a budget work session. There was a great deal of discussion from council members concerning next year's budget. City manager Dalton and finance director Dixie Wall were very supportive in addressing the questions that the council members had. The city's yearly budget will be voted on by council at the June council meeting. The city has just finished repairs to Carroll Street and has completed completing new pavement on North Stire Street. Repairs and paving of other streets and areas are being considered for future projects. This past week, I was able to witness some heavy equipment clearing the area just off Academy Street where the city's new gym and playground area will be constructed. As I looked up the street toward this building, I could see equipment at this place preparing for new pavement throughout this area from Jacob Street to Oak Street. The engineers for Cleveland County Water announced that construction on the new water interconnect with our city will begin on June the third, two thousand twenty-four, and should be completed no later than October of two thousand twenty-four. City manager Dalton and I spoke to Senator Ted Alexander this past week to request funds for some help with some special products, special, excuse me, projects that the city has. Two projects discussed were remodeling of this community building and possibly some help with paving of our roads. Senator Alexander informed us that monies are very scarce this budget year, but he is working hard to acquire any funds that may be available. We will continue to stay in contact with Senator Ted Alexander, as well as our representative Kelly Hastings for support of our local projects. Electric Cities is preparing to erect a sign on the Gardner Webb property on West Academy Street to help market this property for the city. Cherryville has not received any help from our local county's Economic Development Department in aiding with this future development. This property would be a great opportunity for business or industry to locate in our area. Earlier today, I read a proclamation at Carolina Health and Rehabilitation proclaiming this week as National Nursing Home Week. I will read a similar proclamation at Peak Resources on Thursday at their annual barbecue and their celebration of National Nursing Home. And speaking of celebrations, this week is also National Law Enforcement Week, and I would like to recognize all our law officers that are here and thank them for their work and dedication and the way they help our city when in times of need. Congratulations, fellas. This concludes. This concludes the mayor's comments, and we will go on now to our next item, which is item seven, Special Recognition of City Employees for Their Years of Service. And at this time, I would like to ask Jason Parton if he or any members of his family would come forward. This certificate is awarded to Jason Parton in recognition of ten years of service to the city of Cherryville. It is signed by your city manager, Brian Dalton, and Mayor H.L. Bean. Congratulations. At this time, we will have on our agenda citizens to be heard. If any citizen would like to speak at this time, you may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and we would remind you that comments will be strictly held to three minutes per person. Do I have any citizen that would like to be heard at this time? This is your chance. Any citizen would like to be heard? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item nine, and this is Proclamation in Recognition of National Puppy Day. And I would like to ask all members of the American Legion Auxiliary if they would come forward. We've got a good group here.
Okay, you'll be presenting it to our president here.
This is from the office of the mayor, May the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, expressing support for the designation of the May twenty-fourth as National Puppy Day in honor of our fallen American Legion Unit One Hundred submitted the following proclamation, which was referred to the office of the mayor, H.L. Bean, for review. And this proclamation reads as follows. Expressing support for the designation of May the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, as National Puppy Day in Cherryville, and recognizing the importance of honoring those that have worn our nation's uniform, and whereas poppies are worn and displayed as a symbolic tribute to our fallen and to the future of living veterans and service members, and whereas at the end of World War One, the American Legion adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom and the blood sacrificed by troops in war times, and whereas the use of the poppy symbiotically comes from the poem "In Flanders' Fields", which movingly begins, "In Flanders' Field, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row", referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned earth of battlefields across Belgium and France where soldiers died fighting. And whereas the American Legion family has long utilized the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the blood shed by those who have served in our U.S. military and the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary, expand the meaning and symbolism of the poppy, varying the manner in which the poppy is symbiotically showcased in England and in Canada in celebratory fashion on their Remembrance Day, also known as Armistice Day and Poppy Day. And whereas wearing a poppy will unite citizens from across the country who decide to show their patriotism, and whereas May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, will be an appropriate date to be designated as National Poppy Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the office of the mayor, one, supports the designation of May the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, as National Poppy Day, and two, encourages all citizens, residents, and visitors in Cherryville to join in serving this day to honor every service member who has died in the name of liberty, freedom, and democracy, while also showing their support for living veterans, service members, and their families. And this is signed by Page H. Green, Certified Municipal Clerk, and H.L. Bean, Mayor. Congratulations. Our next item on our agenda is Consideration of Planning Board slash Board of Adjustment Appointments. And we have our Planning and Zoning Director, Richard Ehlum, here. That's page fourteen in your agenda packet.
Good evening. Every year or two, and this time it's been three years, we have to ask our members to volunteer to be on the planning board. And this year, we have two from the ETJ and one from the city limits that needs to be approved in the city council. From the ETJ, we have Mark Mooney and also Matthew Mooney. We're looking to the city council to approve them, along with Wade Strapp from the city limits. And if you get that approval tonight, then that way I have to relay it to the Hudson County so that the commissioners can approve Mark Mooney and Matthew Mooney at their meeting. And once they're approved there, then they're good for another three years. And they volunteered to serve another three years.
And you have asked all three?
Yes.
Okay.
Mister Wade Strapp here tonight.
Okay, what is the direction of city council on the consideration of these appointments to the Planning Board slash Board of Adjustments?
I make a motion to reappoint all three, Mark Mooney, Matthew Mooney, and Wade Strapp.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve all three members, Mark Mooney, Matthew Mooney, who are in the ETJ, and Wade Strapp, who is in our city. Any discussion by any council member? If not, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed the same, there is none.
I'd just like to state that the term will expire on June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
And I need, I guess you need to stay up there for. Item eleven is Consideration of Amendments to our zoning ordinance. And we would need to go into public hearing for this.
Yes.
So I would entertain a motion to enter into public hearing at this time.
Make a motion, we enter into public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to enter into public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same, we are now considered in public hearing. We have Planning and Zoning Director, Richard Ehlum, to explain this. You will go to page fifteen, and it continues through page forty-one.
Fifteen and sixteen, just highlights, what item is number eleven? If it's in green, give squat, the planning board recommended. So we'll go to the first item, which is on page seventeen, which is Mister Zachary Price asked that this permitted use of a boutique be placed into the residential office section. So it went before the planning board, and the planning board also asked that a definition of boutique be placed in the zoning ordinance also. And it was unanimous by the planning board that it used to be put in the RO district, and also that the definition be placed in the zoning ordinance.
And would you read the definition of boutique?
I'll be happy to. A small store selling fashionable clothes, accessories, shoes, handbags, jewelry, cosmetics, et cetera.
Okay. Would like to continue now?
You want to the next one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next item is on page eighteen, through twenty, deals with cluster development. I went before the planning board. Okay, page eighteen, I asked at the bottom of page that the side yard setback be increased from five feet to six feet. And these are being asked for because of that last plat you approved. There were certain items that these questions came up on, so it might as well put in the ordinance so that I don't ask anymore.
Which, that would make it twelve foot between structures, correct?
Yes, that'd be correct. And page nineteen, what you see in yellow, items number three, four, and five, that was lot width. There was some question by the builder, you know, he was having trouble understanding. So if you got the width, that's supposed to be forty feet at the street or fifty feet at the street, it needs to stay so on the plat. So we put the definition in our side lot lines, be measured with the minimum required front yard setback. And we noticed on the plat also that the corner houses were only six feet from the street, whereas in a normal ordinance, you add an additional ten feet. So I'm asking that it read an additional ten feet be provided on all side doors, which I've got a public street. That way it would put the house sixteen feet from the street instead of six feet from the street. And the lot, put in here the lot width, because sometimes you can't make the width exactly like forty or fifty feet because they go in a pile shape. So that could be approved by me or the technical review committee that, you know, we could reduce it a little bit, as long as the lot still reaches the square footage, you know, the nine thousand square feet, twelve thousand square feet, et cetera. And the last thing in the number seven, number E. Every lot approved for development shall be for the purpose of building a single or two-family dwelling upon the approved parcels. Parcels shall not be combined from side or rear parcels to make a larger parcel. That's the purpose of having a development, so that you can get a house on each lot. Sometimes an individual might have enough money to come in and buy this lot, and then he wants to buy this one, this one, and the one behind him to make a big lot. The city, the builder loses out on money, and the city loses out on money. So that's why we're going to put that in there. So we're going to have big lots, and other people have to have a small lot. And then on page twenty, you can see on number D, I struck through until at least fifty percent, but not more than eighty-five. but not more than eighty-five of units are sold, they need to not be keeping up the lots. So I put a line through the fifty percent, made it be eighty-five percent of the lots have to be sold before they quit helping keep the lots up in the grass, et cetera. And also in yellow, at that time, the homeowners association will be responsible for maintaining all the undeveloped lots and open spaces. Put it upon them instead of the city to make sure the lots are made. So that was what I asked of the Planning Board. And it was a long discussion. Before the other thing, page eighteen at the bottom of the page. I asked that the R nine cluster, which allowed for six thousand square foot lots, be done away with and keep the other ones from, that way the smallest lot could be eight thousand square foot, you know, in an R four yard. You know, we had the discussion on the last development out on Neil B. Road, Black Rock School Road. Went on for about four minutes, and it was not approved, so Planning Board wasn't interested in the small lots. And the City Council written, that's the reason I'm asking that it be, but the City Council, I think we should have some cluster lots there. You know, R forty, fifteen, and twelve, you still have eight thousand, ten thousand, and twenty thousand square foot lots. But then we got to the bugging and the planning board having Mister Strapp here. There was a recommendation that to do away with all clusters. And seconded, and that was probably an hour discussion, which can be verified by our city attorney. And they voted to recommend the City Council to do away with all clusters, but that's not what I'm asking, that if the City Council decides not to do away with the six thousand square feet, I ask that you please go ahead and accept those in yellow that changes to the cluster developments.
I, I have one question back to, and I think that's page nineteen, about, or, about the percentage, I'm sorry, that's page twenty. In yellow, you say at that time, the homeowners association were responsible for maintaining all undeveloped lots and open spaces. And I understand what you're saying about cutting the grass and so forth. But when did they actually establish a homeowners association?
Well, they mentioned that, you know, the last one we had. I wasn't here for the two that's been approved before. Are they going to have homeowners associations?
Yes, both developments will have a homeowners association. And my understanding is as soon as the first house is constructed, the homeowners association starts to be in place. Now, that's not something that we're, we're in charge of or we're owed. That's, that's on them. The developers involved to help get that established. And it gives them some, some power.
But it looks like to me whoever buys that first lot is going to have control over the other lots.
No, it's just they have the ability to, they have the ability to impose certain restrictions within that development that we may not have. As far as, you know, the way the grass has to be cut, the way, you know, certain things are in the neighborhood, they have that ability, not the city. We don't have any neighborhoods right now that have a homeowners association. Now, we do have neighborhoods or developments that had deed covenants when the, when the, when the development was put in place, but typically those deed covenants is don't get enforced because the residents don't ever go enforce them, or they go dead after a certain period of time, and they're not enforced.
Who's going to enforce them with the homeowners association?
That's on the homeowners association.
The-
They have officers like-
Correct.
They do have officers.
Typically, they'll, they'll assess a fee of whatever it might be per month, and then they have a homeowners association. And they need to have meetings, they have officers, and they make certain recommendations.
They write their own covenants, is that right? Would they write their own covenants, or have they been written already?
They would write their own, yeah, the developer would have that in play when they started.
Okay, so the developer does that, alright.
Okay, and while we're discussing this right now, I would like to get input from our council on how they feel about doing away completely with cluster building. Uh, that's never come before us before. If we approve this tonight, are we doing away with cluster building?
Uh-uh, that's not what Richard recommended.
I bet.
Richard made a recommendation, and this is-
Yeah, he's recommending we approve everything in yellow and not do away with the cluster.
Right, I'd, I'd like to see, number sixteen, I'll wait, but the council did do nothing? Or approved part of it? Approved what the Planning Board would recommend?
So it is open?
It's open. But, that in yellow really mean-
Was the, the action taken by the Planning Board, was it unanimous?
No, no, it's one vote, they did not. It wasn't on the paper, I think.
Okay, so it wasn't unanimous.
I have family that lives in a cluster development. And they like it because one of the things I've seen over the years that has been changed is how they control the speed in there, or different things they're doing. You don't have fast cars, you don't have, and plus, all the property looks great. Everybody is forced to keep everybody's looking the same. And even the entranceways coming into it, they're beautiful.
They're stronger than city.
It, it is.
If we do away with it, we're going backward. The cluster developments are the future.
Right.
Most towns around here that have been developed have cluster developments. You go to Huntersville, Mooresville, any of these towns that have been highly developed, they're going to cluster. If we don't, we're not, people aren't going to be able to afford to buy the lots or the homes. Because they're getting so expensive.
Millennials now don't want big yards. They don't want all that to take care of it.
Like I said, one of the other meetings, people want to go to work, come home, sitting in front of TV, they don't want to work in the yard. You know, they like the smaller lots now.
And I'm going to give you an example that, that everybody has probably witnessed and been by. So if you go to East Lincoln High School, directly across the road, you have that development called Trilogy. You know, it's a fifty-five plus development. It's a cluster development, but it is extremely high value homes. I mean, all homes over half a million dollars.
They've got a clubhouse, and, you know, it's really nice.
I don't think you ever want to take that tool out of your toolbox.
No.
Well, is anybody going to speak from the Planning Board to say why they might like that?
Okay.
It's, it's public hearing, they can speak anytime.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I agree with Councilman Freeman that, uh, I would like to see restrictions on the cluster building, maybe, say, eight thousand square foot would be the minimum. Or maybe even nine, maybe-
We've already approved two, two developments that have six thousand, I think. It's crazy to go backwards and say now we're just going to allow eight thousand. People don't want big lots, they want smaller lots.
Are these cluster developments, which residential districts are they going to be allowed in? Any, any residential district?
Yes.
They will be allowed in any residential district?
Like in R forty, you would give it twenty thousand. R fifteen to ten thousand square feet. R twelve would be eight thousand. And once it, they went forward to approve the other nine. R nine, they give it from nine thousand square feet to six thousand square feet.
Page eighteen, uh, lays that out.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I see, I've got that right here in front of me.
I, I see, if we don't restrict certain things, I can see developments, well, do we be mistaken? They don't have any sidewalks, curbing, or in there, how is that allowed?
Right. That's part of that next section, number-
Uh, down there across from, uh, Moss Metal. Those houses in there, same way, they were, a lot of those built in there without sidewalks, curbing, or anything.
Some of, some of have backyards that are overgrown because they, they don't maintain them, they've got too much land.
Okay.
I know, and the Black Rock School, you know, we turned them down from the six.
Yep.
And from, come back with something else, so what if they are in the process of putting something together to come back to us? They still own that property.
Right. But they can't come back from the R nine and six thousand for one year?
Right.
But they, R twelve, they can come back and ask for a cluster of eight thousand?
But it would be eight thousand then, correct?
Yep.
If we do away with it.
Or a community of R twelves.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I definitely agree with, uh, striking the six thousand and going to the eight thousand minimum. But we will still have some control. We will still have some control if somebody owns a large tract of land that's on R forty, that maybe has already been developed partially, and they want to do a cluster in a R forty on remaining vacant land. We will still have some control over that.
Let's go through the process. It has to be at least ten acres.
After he goes through each one of these, then it'd be opened up for public speaking.
Okay.
And you have the special use requirement, so they still have to apply for the special use permit.
So the cluster is a special use?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that explains it, that explains a lot, thank you very much.
Right, it's the Planning Board, the City of Platte, and for the recommendation on special use permit, and it comes through the same process, City Council.
Thank you, thank you, that, that answers a lot of my questions, yes, okay.
Miss Hovis, if you look on page eighteen under-
I'm on eighteen.
Part B there, it talks about where you had to have a special use permit.
Thank you very much. That's great, that's real, that's great.
Okay, does any council members have any questions for Richard so far? If not, go on, we'll jump to, uh, page twenty-one now. I think that's where I had some-
Yep, fences and walls.
Okay. You ready for twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I've had a lot of problems with this in the past year, and there's been a couple fences built in front yards. It used to be in, in the ordinance, it worked all out in front yards. As you can see, at five point four point one, that I put the line, that's the way it was reading in our ordinance. I read it, over the years, it says, in a required setback area, a required side or rear yard. And a side yard usually ends at the front corner of a house. And then the rear yard starts at the rear corner of the house and goes all the way to the rear. But people are arguing, saying, well, it doesn't say front yard. So and also it didn't say you needed to pay money for a permanent, so halfway down, it says to be amended, you see that fences, fences are allowed, are permitted in various districts, subject to the following, and everything in there is what would go into the new ordinance. It says would be installed in the side of the rear yard setback. Nothing in the front setback. The maximum height is always six feet. And then you get the big walls and fences constructed so that the exposed framing and stingers and post support each other face the interior of the yard. About what you mean, like you go to wooden fence? Some people were putting up what we call the ugly side, they were putting the two before's and the posts facing their neighbors, so they got to see the nice interior. But other cities require that the nice exterior go around the properties so the neighbors don't have to look at anything bad. That's what that means.
Okay.
And then C, no fence should be installed until a fence permitted is obtained through the zoning office. And with the required fee, and no fence should be in any right of way.
Is that fee already established? Is that fee already established somewhere?
Yes, twenty-five dollars.
Okay. So you're saying no fences in the front yard?
Correct. In the future-
I like the idea of having a lower fence in the front yard, say four feet instead of six.
Well, you, we could amend it to say, from the front corner of the house to the street, could be no higher than four feet.
What do y'all think about that? Fences or no fences in the front yard?
Personally, I don't like fences in the front yard. Because that means their dog's going to be running.
Well, I know, some people want to have, build the house with a white picket fence, you know?
Well, it's open for discussion.
We do have, we do have a few in town with fences in the front yards.
Hey, my mom has one.
But I, I think what he's doing is-
She's got one higher than six feet.
I think what he's doing is house cleaning here, so that we don't face this in the future. We need to make a definite decision of what we want and what we don't want. I think that's what Richard's trying to do, is sort of clean up the ordinances.
So where you live, and everybody's got a six foot fence all the way up to Daisy Street.
I like that, yeah.
Not very nice. But that's what I would like on this one.
Okay, you may continue.
Yes, sir. Twenty-two through thirty-five. This is a section that was deleted from the City Attorney's zoning ordinance, July eighth, two oh two. The, I will name many names or anything, but certain members on the Planning Board were builders, and this takes away, puts costs on the city. What I'm trying to do is put it back into the ordinance. So that the ordinance is more planned. It puts standards and saves money to the city and puts the cost back on the builders. If you read through the whole thing, I can't go into it right now, all of it, but it was there, it was approved by the Planning Board before, and then over by council. And then these builders on the Planning Board had it removed. That's where you have some developments with no curving, no sidewalks. You just have to put it back in there.
But you're not making any changes to any of that?
I didn't change any of it.
You're just putting it back in?
Putting it back in.
Okay.
As it was ordered.
And it doesn't conflict with anything we already have on the books?
As our city attorney agreed, that many places through our zoning ordinance were referring back to part eleven, and it wasn't there.
It wasn't there, okay. That's a good thing.
And Planning Board, as you mentioned, said it needed to go back in. And I deleted it back in ten years ago, because of different things. But it would really need to get back into the main, main ordinance.
Okay.
I wonder why they took it out, did the, was it money? The developers-
Builders took that money.
It was strictly, it was strictly the, the builders and the developers that wanted to take it out because of money.
They didn't pay for it.
For the minutes I read, it was just for that.
Yeah.
And I think both of them, or most of them, were on the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustments at that time. So they made the rules for themselves.
Sure, sure.
Of interest for sure, well, why?
And some of them were still on my commedia at that time.
Sam Beam and Bud Light.
Okay, okay.
We'll move on to the next one, sir.
Yes, sir. Thirty-six through thirty-nine. We do have some changes there.
This is not a hard one. This was put into the ordinance in, I think, last year. It deals with non-residential building designs in B three and GMC. And all of it's really, really good except for parts of it that applies to the GMC. If these were in place, we wouldn't have a moldering polymer, for example, for, he was making them with brick all the way around the building. Excessive cost. So I'm asking like five point, ten point two applicability in GMC zoning districts that that are not applied in GMC zoning districts. Materials and colors, you can see in yellow, what's in yellow would be added?
I got a question. Dollar general, uh, if they applied today, would it be built like the one down at Trine? Or would it be built like the one we have now, or the one in the craps?
It would have to be on brick, it would have to be brick, stone, and cast stone all the way around, because it's in B three. It'd be neither. This would just-
So that's not in general, in fact?
Just applies to general, in fact.
Right, just general, in fact. Like how long Big Beam ruined, and Academy Street.
So in other words, they can put up a metal building and go, go work?
Yeah, on the sides and rear, but the front's still gotta be same.
Okay.
The front will be same.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with a metal building for manufacturing anyway.
Not from general manufacturing.
Like I said, the big thing is if you think about modern polymers, if modern polymers come today under our standards that we currently have, they would not be able to deal with that building.
Right.
And that's, that's not something we would.
I have two companies waiting now to hear the answer on this tonight before they fly for his own permits.
Okay.
So that was, uh, covered day oh thirty-six, I'll have to look at. Page thirty-eight sidewalks, sidewalks applying G, B three, et cetera, but they wouldn't apply in the GMC zoning districts. Imagine building a new building on Big Beam Road and just that two hundred feet's got sidewalk in front of it, around on Academy Street, that one building's got sidewalk in front of it. It's an unnecessary cost to the builder and scares them away. I'm asking if, no, sidewalks don't apply to the GMCs.
Okay.
And that's, that little bit, it's just GMC in that district, a little page, that's all, what's in the other?
Okay. We can go on.
Okay, and the very last one, this is pertaining to the tribal subdivision ordinance. This is the final plat, which is, sometimes it takes six weeks to get to the city council. And all the city council does is, is look at it and approve it anyway. Once y'all approve it at the first meeting, we're going with a special use permit. And it'd be allowed to go into our technical review committee, which consists of myself, the city manager, public works director and the fire chief. They look for fire hydrants and public works director looks at the water lines, sewer lines, et cetera, et cetera. City manager, I think he looked at, I look through the ordinance and look for the, look for the laws and the buildings and all that. But I'm asking in those two pages of the final plat, that the city council be taking out of it, it's a, the technical review committee, unless they receive it from that, and start work on it and get it done and issue permits. I mean, a lot of cities don't have this extra step, and it saves the builder six weeks. It's still being reviewed and we've got four people reviewing it, officers reviewing it.
Sounds good to me.
If you'll read it, it's.
Yeah, I agree.
I like what it's got.
Can I take y'all out at the same time?
Okay.
Cause we would have already approved it, just not the final plat.
Right.
Yeah, it makes sense.
And that's my presentation.
Okay, uh, public hearings now open for any citizen that would like to speak at this time.
I'm Wade Strout, I live at one oh one C, South Elm Street, and also I'm a member of the Planning and Zoning Board and thank you for reappointing me this evening. Although after, uh, that presentation, I don't know what I'm getting into for another term. Um, it certainly is a lot to digest, um, first of all, is the council going to take action on each of these items individually? I would hope. Okay, um, and therefore I might, Paige, if you stop the clock or, cause I certainly, I think I've got more than three minutes to say.
Oh, you're not.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, thank you, but I will be brief as possible. Um, I'm here as a citizen, but also as a member of the planning board, but I didn't come prepared and didn't do my homework to defend the actions of the planning board. Um, so just taking these one at a time, um, the cluster development seems to be where there's the most discussion and the most, uh, uh, information that we, you, you folks have talked about. Um, the, the planning board in no way is against higher density development, smaller lot sizes, the things that were mentioned, the quality of life things that, that people are looking for today. That's certainly, um, that's certainly something that I think we all are, are becoming accustomed to and certainly enjoy. Um, but I would love for somebody to explain to me specifically what is this cluster development? I mean, if you have a, um, I mean, it, it pertains only to single family homes, so the multi-use, multi-family, town home type stuff, this doesn't come into play anyway. Um, it's a special use of the zoning ordinance anyway, so if a developer has an R fifteen, um, tract of land and they want it, they want the, if they're wanting to go to the cluster development route. And go to a, um, you know, R twelve cluster and take it to a nine thousand square foot lot instead of a fifteen thousand square foot lot, for example, and I'm talking off the top of my head. I, I never have understood what the cluster development gives them, uh, it's basically a kind of a special use rezoning. Why don't they just apply for rezoning from an R fifteen to an R nine? And they, they achieve the exact same results. So, um, uh, so anyway, the cluster and, and all due respect to Mr. Eland, um, 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 as the presentations we made. It, it was not really brought out, the fact that the Planning and Zoning Board, even with not unanimous, but one dissension. Requested that the council consider removal of cluster developments, period.
He said that?
He said that, but he's, he's making a recommendation to you that this is what I want to do. I would invite a way the Planning and Zoning Board wanted you to do away with the whole cluster development. I don't see that in the notes, I, I, I'm not looking at the full agenda items that you folks are, so I apologize on that, but.
I think that's on page, oh gosh, I just lost it, I think it's fourteen?
Right, it, right, be that as it may, I, I, I think you're, you're considering something that the planning director has brought to you and that's within his purview and certainly your purview to entertain that. But, but I, I still think it should have been more merit given to the fact that, that we did have an hour discussion about this. And we were all but one vote in agreement that the entire cluster development section should be done away with. And again, to my point personally, if a developer has a larger tract of land and it's on R twenty, R fifteen, R twelve. And they wanna put smaller lot sizes, smaller homes, smaller setbacks, why would they not rea- just apply for a different zoning? What, what's the, what's the purpose of the cluster development? You're, basically that's what you're doing in the, in the, in the, the one that you did support the planning board on, going from R twelve to the R nine cluster, whatever. You were cutting the lot sizes in six and half.
So they had even a lot more green space, they weren't welding all the land.
Uh, understood, um, and to my, another point, um, if you would, um, the planned residential developments, the, the item E. That we're talking about, that was removed in two thousand and two, uh, and I'm glad it was brought out, uh, that, of, of who, who was kind of the, the general population that was behind that removal. It was builders, um, for their advantage, because that, and I was mayor at the time, but in two thousand, the, the planning and zoning ordinances were chopped apart from top to bottom. We had a citizens committee, we had the planning board, the planning board was involved with those changes, uh, as well as the council at that time. That's when this planned residential development section was added, with full agreement from the planning board. But two years later, the planning board takes it out? So that begs the question of why, and I think you answered that tonight. But now here we are twenty-four years later from when we did a full-scale revision of our planning and zoning ordinances. And nothing's been done since then. It's all been piecemeal, it's all been ad hoc, as Richard can certainly speak to, he's had to go back and find when certain items were changed and, and certain things are not. So it's, uh, we've asked, the planning and zoning board has asked twice in, in my tenure, which has only been about six or eight months. We've asked twice that the council consider an entire revision of the, the, the whole ordinances. So I personally think if you look at, if you really look at and study the planned residential development section that was taken out twenty-one years ago. If that's implemented, I think that answers a lot of the questions about the cluster developments, because it puts, it, it allows for, for the town homes, the multi-family, uh, single-family homes, duplexes, the whole nine yards. But it also gives very strict guidance as to what's done in this development, to the green spaces, to the amenities, to the setbacks, to the sidewalks, to wherever you want it to be. And you can certainly change that much more than maybe we changed it twenty years ago. But it, it, it just looks like we're throwing a lot of stuff up against it all and see if it sticks, and that just doesn't make any sense to me. So maybe we gotta leave the cluster development in, we may or may not put back in the planned residential development. In the bigger picture, we're all talking about the same thing, what does the city of Terrible want in future development, period? Do you wanna be strict with it or do you wanna be loose with it? And that, that's your decision, right? But to take twenty-four-year-old ordinances and piecemeal them and take this sentence out, put this sentence in, take out a whole section or put in a whole section. I mean, that's certainly what you can do tonight, but it would be my full, full argument that, that something needs to be done and sooner than later. For a full-scale revision of all of our ordinances. And it's my understanding that we have a lot of neighboring cities that have done that recently and their standards are much more strict, much more, uh, fitting for today's environment than ours are. So I would suggest that, and one final question, um, and it actually just was asked of me by Rick Shulman, I'm sorry that I can't answer it. On the fences or walls permitted, and Mr. Eland, I think we talked about this, but the question was if, if someone has a small knee wall. Or maybe just a small entry to their sidewalk, uh, in the front yard. I don't think the intent was to prohibit something of that nature. You see what I'm saying, I understand prohibiting a six-foot fence on your front, front lawn setback. But if you have a nice little decorative two-foot brick.
No, a retaining, retaining wall.
Well, retaining wall or just a decorative, sometime have wool, and even I, I know there's a house on Main Street that as you enter, as you enter their sidewalk, they just have a little forty-five degree angle. Small fence, it's, it's probably not three or four foot long on each, 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 each leg. But I, I, I don't think the intent was to prevent that sort of thing, so you need to maybe address that in the language of that fence, uh, ordinance. But, but again, thank you for your time, uh, again, I, I hope it's taken on, uh, and if there's any questions from what the planning board, uh, had and done, or any questions, we'd be, be happy to answer those at this, at this time.
Wade, on, on section six point five, which defines cluster development.
Yes, ma'am.
Did, did the planning board go through that and to see that that was something that was needed that maybe was not in the planned developments?
Well, I don't know that we talked, I, I think we talked about it more maybe as, uh, and certainly in my mind, it, it speaks more to if the planned residential development ordinance sections reinstated.
Okay.
That, that, that would answer some of the questions that are, have come up since the cluster developments. Cause the cluster developments will not end in two thousand, they were put in at some point in time since then, so, um.
But this, this, uh, definition that we currently have speaks to utilities and streets in a cluster development. That, uh, maybe it would, yes, a cluster development would require less, make less utilities, less streets. And would save maintenance cost in the future.
Uh, perhaps you're, you're right, so, and, um, but again, I think it's, if we have, if the city, uh, if the city has a, a strict guidance on any plan development, any plan development, any neighborhood, whatever it is. That's, that R twelve, R fifteen, single-family homes, or if it's a, a, a town homes and multi-family, uh, we feel that there needs to be guidance on that and it needs to be consistent. It, it really doesn't matter if it's a multi-family area of town or a single-family area of town, there, as far as aesthetics and, and green spaces and open spaces and amenities and sidewalks, et cetera. That should kind of be consistent, now it would be obviously scaled to that particular development, a, a small, multi-family versus a large R fifteen, single-family home development, it'd be scaled, but you still have those standards that every builder needs to adhere to, in our opinion, so.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I swear I'm getting a little bit confused because I feel like our ordinance doesn't address those, those issues.
Like a development, you know, you'd consider, you know, a planned development is, you know, twenty or more homes. So we'd say is, hey, the developer is responsible for the streets, the developer's responsible for the water, so the developer now has to put in a sidewalk, all those things. So that's where I'm getting a little bit confused on, on where our ordinance doesn't address those issues, cause I feel like it do.
Well, your, so your ordinance now addresses everything that's in the section eleven point one that was removed in two thousand and two.
Wait, no, no, six eleven brings them back. Bring them all to that.
No, 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 because I, I can, I'm not saying here, too, and say I'm, I know all this stuff, but, uh, but in, in, in my opinion, and in the planning board's opinion, the, the, the section eleven point one. Planned residential developments ties all of that together. Now, there may be other phases of the current ordinance as it stands that requires them to put inside or doesn't do this, but the planned residential development is more, I think, a more consistent across the board. This is what Terrible wants to see, whether it's single-family, multi-family, whatever, uh, so it ties it together in one place. Now, aside from that, people can still ask for special uses or they can ask for rezonings or those sorts of things, so, a- again, I, 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 I still never had anyone claiming what the cluster, the cluster development does.
Well, it allows for more homes and less area.
So, okay, I'm a builder and I've got a tract of land that's currently R fifteen, why would I not just apply for an R nine?
Well, because R nine, if it's just a regular R nine, you're gonna go to nine thousand square foot lot, they're trying to go to six thousand square foot lot.
Okay, well, apply for R six or whatever, and then, well, no, okay, and, and, and again, that's, that, that brings up a, a very salient point, so it was, you've taken it out. Because at, at some point, we might be held in agreement, maybe not, that six thousand square foot lots in a single-family development is, is just too much. Okay, we'll, we'll specify that in your zoning ordinance.
It's already in, we already have huge, two huge developments approved with six thousand square foot.
Understood, but I think we could agree to disagree on that point, um, and, and I think.
That's what you said there, it's already proved to.
I understood, but is that what we want in our future of our territory? We want high-density, six hundred homes packed on a, a, a lot, and it goes back to my point two of the one that was approved on Rickway Road. That, that, that developer could have started his project at, I don't know what the, what it went from, he could have put in four hundred home sites without doing anything, without coming here to do anything. But the city let him put in six hundred home sites, is that what we want? I, 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 I'm asking.
I want, but some people want.
But I, but that's, but that's, again, that's the purpose of the planning and zoning ordinance. It's not what I want, it's not what you want, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Mr. Bay, Mayor, it's not what we individually want, it's what the city of Terrible wants. So if we continue to go back and forth with, we have an established tract of land that's R twelve, they can do whatever they want to within the R twelve zoning. But if we're making it easy to do an R nine cluster, which gives them six thousand square foot homes. But we've said we don't want six thousand square foot lots, but we're gonna give you a backdoor to do that, that just doesn't make sense. Make the zoning ordinance reflect what the city wants and make it consistent. And then it's easy, it's easy on everybody, it's easy on the planning board, it's easy on developers, certainly easy on the council, that you don't have these continued con- conditional use, uh, applications and, and that sort of thing.
Special permit.
Yeah, so.
There are a lot of cases, it's not easier on the developer because you can't make as much money.
It, and is that the city of Terrible's concern? Are we here to be concerned with what the developer's, uh, final profit's gonna be, or are we here to develop what the city of Terrible wants to see?
They're allowed to do that, in some cases, they won't, they won't come in and develop.
Again.
Oh, they can't, uh, it's property.
Uh, excuse me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sit down, I mean, we, I'm gonna sit down, we can argue about that point all day long. What does the city of Terrible want to see and be when it comes to planning and zoning? Planning and zoning is, is never fun, you're telling somebody else what they can do, what they can't do. But if you're gonna have a planning and zoning ordinance, why not make it conducive to what Terrible wants to see? Thank you.
And how you gonna decide what Cherryville wants to see?
But, again, Mr. Freeman, with all due respect, that's why you thought we're elected to sit where you're sitting and make those decisions.
But I think that's what they're trying to address now. In fact, we just turned down the guy that was wanting six-thousand square-foot homes. He's now in the process of re-grouping, and maybe we'll come back to Richard with a new plan. We don't know that, but, uh, and that's why we're doing away with the six thousand for the future of the cluster field.
He pretty much told us when he was here last time, he can't do that and make a profit for his company.
But I still believe we'll come back with another plan.
Again, again, with all due respect, that's, a- as, as elected officials for the city of Cherryville, that's where the concern should be. Not with developers, not with outside interests wanting to come in and change what we want to be. But another point, again, um, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that, 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 the, the, the emphasis of the planning board's vote to remove cluster development altogether has maybe been skirted past and not taken seriously in this, in this consideration. Thank you.
What I believe is that we should let the fair market dictate what, what the, what the developers can do. Like I said before, if they build four of those homes and they don't sell, they won't build anymore. Fair market is what needs to be.
I apologize, and I am gonna sit down and shut up after this. To, i- if, if that's gonna be your stance, then do away with the planning, planning ordinance altogether. If fair markets are determined, just let anybody do what they wanna do. That's not the purpose of elected officials when you have a stated planning and zoning ordinance. You, it, by nature, that's what you're doing with that ordinance.
Can I ask one question or two? If it's an R-12 lot, um, that's, it's, so if it didn't even have the name cluster type to it, it's R-12, they're going to have the same square foot, right?
Yeah.
What does that change?
If it's, if it's simply an R-12, it would be a twelve-thousand-square-foot lot. If they apply for an R-12 cluster development, it would go to a eight-thousand-square-foot lot.
Or they could apply for an R-nine and go to a nine-thousand-square-foot lot, in the standard ordinance.
So that'd be a question, they go with standard R-nine, and does that still require the open spaces? And it still does?
For, for planned development, yeah.
Including number eleven.
So, I mean, Wade, no disrespect to you, and to answer your question, I think we've already decided what direction we want for Cherryville by approving the two, uh, R-nine clusters that we've already approved. Um, my daughter lived in a cluster development for a couple of years, you know, and the houses were right on top of each other. And it was in Raleigh, and they loved it, they didn't want a yard. Um, they wanted to, like Jerry said, um, they wanted to come home and, and be able to relax. Um, and now, they have, um, a son, and they have bought a large house on a large lot, and they're, they've changed. So they're still in Raleigh, but now they, they live in a much bigger house with a huge lot, where now they wanna have a backyard, and so, you know, I think you have to have a little bit of everything. You know, and I think that's kind of the direction we're going. Sure, I, we wanna have some R-nine, but then we wanna have others, so when people want the big backyards and...
I have a granddaughter that's went through the very same thing. She was in Wilmington, they loved it, and the, uh, cluster homes, they loved it because they could afford it, they didn't have upkeep and everything, but as, as they've saved money and all, now they've bought a house, they moved into town where they had acre-and-a-half lot and a bigger house. So I think you go through those stages, uh, with your marriage, or with the way you feel about things. I think, I think your mindset changes as you mature, or whether you just make more money. I think everybody wants to have a, a, a big home, but starting out, they know that it's not a possibility. They can't afford it, they can't have, um, the upkeep and all, so I think we do need a combination of all of it.
And the cluster home is an upgrade from an apartment, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
What the knowledge about having these sidewalks, to where you see people on the sidewalks and not out in the streets? And like, out in Dewey Bains, if you're walking, everybody, we're all having to move and dodge things. There's no sidewalks, there's no curving, um, it's, you're just out in the road moving. It would look a lot, lot nicer if there were sidewalks and these, makes it safer.
You got a minute more? Sure, I'll get it.
I'm hearing, thanks for listening.
Okay, I'm Sid Strapp, and I'm at two oh seven West Academy Street. And I, I swore, and it really was magnesium, but you know, I listened really intently about this. And yeah, I'm just gonna give you my two cents worth. What I, I get out of this, because I was back with those other two developments, you know, is I sort of do question, I mean, are, are you really all, so, do you need this group of people that review this? If, see, that's what I was at, and I'm sorry that I spoke out of turn. I'm, Wade's gonna knock me out if I do it again, uh, because I know I'm supposed to wait. But my question was, you know, I, and with due respect to Richard, he, I didn't hear why, he was not presenting why the planning board had made that decision. And I was sort of confused as to why you all were going down this track and not saying, Richard, clarify why, you know, this is a big decision, why were they making that decision? Because that's the reason why you're appointing them, right? Is to get their opinions and their expertise in this area. That's my first thing. Um, I, I, I think that, um, I don't think anybody's arguing about that we don't wanna have a cluster or a small, uh, sort of, what is, the, you know, the, the community, the houses were closer together. I think what I heard Wade was saying was simplify it, you know? By adding this, uh, wording about a cluster development, it sort of makes it a little bit more complex. If you already had the wording in there from two thousand two, I would suggest that somebody review it and say, does this fit the, the, the definition of what we wanna accomplish with the cluster? And if so, implement that back into the ordinance without creating another avenue, I guess, is what I would say. Lastly, I also wanna add a knee-high brick wall to the nineteen M house, nineteen O eight house that we've restored. It originally had that in the front, and it's sort of a, a brick wall that sort of defines the corners of the property on the street. So please don't prevent me from doing that. I'd like to add that to the front of the house here shortly. Thank you for your time.
Okay, let, let me speak to the cluster. Of course, I was not on the city council when the first two were approved. And when the Blackrock School Walk, uh, Road was, uh, came before us, I, I voted against that. Because if, if we've got a, and there was like almost a thousand, am I correct? A thousand units in those first two, uh, those first two that were approved, there was a thousand units. And I just felt like, that was, one of my reasons was I didn't feel like we needed another cluster development. Also, my second reason, I, I think you have to look at the, where, where the proposed development is located, what's surrounding it, where it is in our city, where it is. I think you have to take that into consideration also. And that was another reason I, I voted against that, the Blackrock School Road development. As far as leaving the cluster development in our zoning ordinance, I don't, I think it's more of a, a new type thing. I'm a, I'm from the old school, I'm from the old school, and cluster developments are kind of a new thing. They are a new thing, and, and I don't really have a problem with them if they are approved for a certain tract of land. But I, uh, I, I, I have misgivings about it, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Either way, though, it's gonna have to come before us, either way. So if they request a cluster, or they request a rezoning from an R-40 to an R-nine, it still has to come before us.
And it goes planning board first.
And it goes to planning board first. And I, I really, if, my memory is not what it used to be, but I'm pretty sure when we approved the first one, the zoning board did not make a stance at all. So they pretty much said, hey, we're not, we're not gonna pick a side, y'all pick. And, you know, at that point, I was like, why do we have a zoning board if they're not, that's their job to tell us? That's another reason why I voted with the zoning board to decline the other one. Because the zoning board said, hey, we don't wanna approve it, and like Jenna said, I didn't think it fit in with all the development neighborhoods out there. The two that we've approved and where they are, I think they fit because they're a little bit more separated from... My mom lives out there at Rickway, but this new development's far enough away from her that it's, she's not even, she don't even know it's there. She don't even know that they've cleared up the land, and she drives it everywhere. So I voted for those because I think they fit where the requests were. And I voted against the other one because the zoning board recommended it, and I didn't think it fit that location. So I'm done.
Uh, I need to know if any other citizen would like to speak before we exit, uh, public hearing? Any other citizen like to be heard concerning this? If not, I would entertain a motion, uh, from council that we exit public hearing at this time? Have a motion in two seconds that we exit public hearing at this time? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and it is unanimous. And now, we are open for council discussion of what has been presented. And I want to thank Richard for the work he has done. Uh, I always think we need to continually look at the ordinances to see if there's any way we can improve them in any way. Uh, thank you for the work you've done, Richard, to then not just sit over there and draw a salary and, uh, not worry about what's going on with the city. But we're now open for, uh, discussion from council on what has been proposed. And if you want to vote on each one of these separate, then please let me know. If you want to vote on them as a partial group, or if you want to exclude one item, or if you want to vote on all of them, it's, it's up to council how they wanna do it, uh...
I agree. Open it up to discussion, but I think we all table it and not vote on it tonight. Anybody who would want to vote, we'll be open.
I agree.
Well, I have thought about that, too, and when I proposed that to Richard, he said he's got people waiting on decisions from council on this tonight to know what to move on.
So which ones are you, you have people waiting on?
Manufacturing one.
Or the GMC thing about buildings, et cetera.
Yeah.
And we can't vote on, sort of, we can vote on, uh...
Table the one-on-one.
I think the, the big concern is C, which is the cluster development section. And if you wanna exclude that one, then vote on A, B, D, E, F, and G. As one unit, you're welcome to do that.
Come right back. Could we not just postpone for the work session? Is that gonna be a problem, Richard? Does that really gotta be a big problem? What, what he's...
Well, you do have a business that's ready to build a pretty substantial business.
We did.
Well, we need to, we need to...
And it's not a thing that...
We need to handle that, yeah, we need to handle that.
If I could give a vote on all of, like, the close, cluster, they're good.
Okay.
I have a motion or a direction from council, let me word it different, direction from council of how we wanna vote on this.
I make a motion that we approve A, B, D, E, F, and G, and that we postpone voting on C till a later time.
Is that a motion, John?
Yes.
A second.
Motion in a second, I will refer to council, is this okay to do it that way?
It is, maybe.
All right. I have a motion in a second that we vote on recommendations, uh, from our planning and zoning director, the recommendations of A, B, D, E, F, and G at this time. And I would entertain, uh, a vote at this time, since we have a motion in a second. All in favor to accept these recommendations, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and we have none, it is unanimous. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, we'll move on to item twelve. It's consideration of the no outlet sign on Joyce Drive. And, uh, I would need direction from council that we approve this, uh, no outlet sign, and that we go through the process of, uh, establishing that and constructing that and placement, placement of the no outlet sign on Joyce Drive. So I know where that is, that's down that way.
Did you speak to...
Yes, Mayor, yes, I did speak to Connie and Iman Bo that live on the corner. And they didn't have no problem with somebody...
Because it will be in their yard.
That's right, it'll be on the corner. Chief, you gonna say something?
My suggestion would that be, that sign be a dead-end sign instead of a no outlet? Because normally with a no outlet, when you go in, you've got multiple streets. That street is a complete dead-end, it has no turnaround, it has nothing.
Yeah.
So if you could change that wording to dead...
It's just a different meaning, uh, technical meaning, the dead-end sign.
It would help us out, I agree. I, I think it would.
That's, that's fine, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, you wanna put that in form of a motion?
Yes, I, I would put that in form of a motion that we, um, we place a dead-end sign at the corner of Joyce and Colonial, is that Colonial?
Yes.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to, um, place the no-outlet sign.
Dead-end sign.
Dead-end sign, uh, at the, uh, uh, corner of Joyce Drive and Colonial. And that would be on the Met Wally's property.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, there is none. Okay, we'll move to item thirteen. This is consideration of our audit contract for fiscal year 2024. And city manager Brian Dalton will lead us through that. It's very lengthy, and that's pages forty-two through fifty, and your agenda packets.
Yes, Mayor, council, as you well know, Butler and Stowe has performed our audit for the past several years. I think we all agree that they, they, uh, they've done a great job for us. And if you look on page forty-eight, uh, the price is, is roughly about the same. It's, uh, about fifty-six thousand dollars for this year's audit, and that's including the financial statement preparation and everything. And we just need to get approval to have them start this process here in the next month.
That's forty-seven, seven, and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty, right on it, fifty-six thousand. Okay, uh, any questions on the, uh, consideration of adopting the audit contract for fiscal year 2024?
Yes, I, uh, Brian, is, is the cost, is that subject to change, or is that gonna be a firm price?
I would say it's firm.
You mean change up or down?
Either way. I put down, but...
If you vote for it, and we, and you recommend this contract, it will be that, if I'm...
Okay, okay, I did, I didn't know if, if something, um, something, another fund or something caused it to, to go longer than it normally would. So that will stick to the fifty-six thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, we need a motion to accept this contract that was presented from council.
I can't wait to accept the contract, so let's present it.
I have a motion in second to accept the contract as presented by Butler Stowe for our audit contract for fiscal year 2024. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, there is none. The issue matters. Item fourteen is, uh, consideration to set a date for public hearing. and this is for our annual budget, and that would be on our June tenth meeting. I would need a motion from council to set that date, that would be our June council meeting of June tenth, where we will have the public hearing for our budget.
The commission will set the public hearing for budget on June tenth, I'll second that.
I have a motion in the second to set the public hearing for our twenty twenty four budget for June tenth, twenty twenty four, which will be our regular next council meeting, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, there is none. Okay, we'll go to other business at this time, do I have any other business from council?
Yes, I think you've already mentioned it, I wanna say a big thank you to our city employees. Y'all, instead of saying it's not my job, I think they all stood up and said, what can I do? You know, I saw people from other departments out there cutting trees, working on things, so thank you, city employees. Also, we give a big thank you to First Baptist Church, especially the Scott Harold Sunday School class. We have a group message, message goes out, hey, we're heading to Johnson Drive, there's a tree down. Well, that's in my backyard. I walked back there, there's seven guys operating there with chainsaws. We removed that tree completely from Johnson Drive. Scott Harold called Brian Dalton, Brian said, all right, head to Elm Street. We moved up down the street after we sent out another message, eight more folks met us up there, we had about sixteen, seventeen people. We removed two trees from Elm Street at no cost to the city of Cherryville. So, big shout out to Scott Harold's Sunday School class. I do have boys and others, but I'm not gonna say my...
Calamine lotion, that's not a lot, from the same thing.
But y'all, I tell you what, it's good to see, we had a gentleman bring his entire family. And Tyler Bean, his wife Katie, and his two small kids are out there jerking limbs as fast as us guys were. So, I mean, what a better witness to... And Tyler said, when the message went out, he was on his way home from work, and his son Noah called him and said, Dad, we're going, aren't we? That gives me cold chills.
It does, that's fantastic.
I was at the command center at the fire department, and city manager was there also when Scott and his crew came in. And we had a whiteboard up there, probably, what, twenty-five, thirty items that needed to be addressed, and they walked in, and the first thing they said, where do we go? And they looked and they said, oh, that one up there, mark it out, we cleared that one, mark this one off, we cleared that one, mark this one off. So, yeah, and I had a guy in my Sunday School, my Sunday School class, Jason Gibby, and he said, I got a call and got blessed out because I was out of town and couldn't be there to help him. So, he said, I got a message from Scott, he needed to be so-and-so, we're doing cleanup. He said, I'm out of town, and he said, he told me for being out of town, but they did, they did a great job.
And they're still doing cleanup now for citizens that need it, because citizens have trees down there, you know, the city's not gonna cut up for them. So, do you know somebody that needs sale? Let Scott Harold know, and I'm sure we'll be out there in a couple of days and start cutting it up for them.
John, they also did it a year ago, when we had that storm a year ago.
Oh, yes, they did.
They were some in my yard a year ago.
And as long as we can get most of it to the curb, the city can take care of most of it, is, am I right, Chris? As long as we can lift it up with the boom truck or...
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Take care of it, but it has to be out, or we can't go along private property.
Let me say this also, Mayor, Council, you mentioned you in South Carolina, and Forest City, they came in and did a great job for us helping us with electrical. But today, Todd Herms from Maiden, their city manager, he reached out to me, he sent a truck, a boom truck, with employees and helped our guys with cleanup today, so we've got a lot of help from around the areas, from people. I just wanna say Maiden, Maiden stepped up, and he's gonna probably send them again tomorrow if it doesn't rain too bad.
That's great.
And it really helps us get...
Like I said in my comments, just at times like this, you can't believe how resilient we are and how we've come together as a city, so that's great. Okay, any other business from council member? City staff?
I will say, obviously, I'm sure most of you saw the parking lot today as you pulled in. It was just recently completed and adds up today with the striking, so I think the parking lot looks great. Parker, James Parker did a great job, I believe, taking the parking lot and the gym. There's been a lot of grading going on, I think they've probably taken about seventy truckloads of debris from the site so far. So they're making good progress there as far as getting the pad ready to start construction.
That was good to see, construction going on there, and I look up this way, and there's more construction down at the pool. More construction going on, so. Got a lot going on in our city, and we've already paved some of our streets and are looking for others that we'll look at in the future, so. Okay, anything else from staff?
I have to pose from staff.
If not, I would entertain a motion from council for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion in second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none, we are adjourned.